Adoption of Agenda for Regular Meeting. Under the provisions of the Public Meetings Law of the State of Missouri, the Board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes a time, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Monday, March 9, 2015, at the Administration Center, 1005 Waterford Drive, Forest, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, to four newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Second.
Motion to be made by Ms. Hogshead, second by Mr. Ebert.
Mr. Ebert.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Trader.
Aye.
Secretary, what's up? Ms. Hogshead.
Aye. Adoption of Agenda for Closed Meeting. Section 610.021 of Missouri law provides for discussion of certain agenda items at a closed meeting. Notice of proposed closed meeting, including the agenda item to be discussed, was posted. The Board by roll call vote must authorize holding the closed meeting and approve the proposed agenda by reference to each subject to be discussed. The agenda for the closed meeting is legal, Section 610.021.1. Personnel, Section 610.021.3. We did already adopt this in our late closed meeting.
And suspend it because didn't want to be reached.
Should save you from having to say all that.
Sorry. You need to be reached.
All right. Well, let's move into the good stuff then. District Spelling Bee Championships.
Good evening, Board. My name is Angela Anderson. I'm the music teacher at Lee Hamilton Elementary. But I'm also the district spelling bee coordinator over at the 17 elementary schools and the three middle schools. And I'm supposed to have students here to receive their trophies, but I'll recognize them regardless. The fourth grade champion is Trinise Jones from Central Elementary. The fifth grade champion, which means these students won, they competed against all fourth grade, all fifth grade like that. The fifth grade championship is Leila Williams. The sixth grade champion was Estefany Estrada from Holman Elementary. She was also the grand champion. She beat everybody. And she's one of only 30 students at the semifinals, the Greater Illinois-St. Louis semifinals, to advance to the final. She'll represent Ferguson-Floreson.
Oh, yeah.
You are just in time. Already the students out there, this is not Estefany, this is the next one, but Estefany, they take only 30 of all those students have to spell 30 words correctly, and Estefany nailed it. So she's the only one from our district to make it to this coming Saturday where the words are like all medical terms. It's onstage at the Kendra University. It'll be filmed and broadcast. If she wins that, she goes to Washington, DC. We're at that level.
Yeah.
And Estefany's name will be added to the, there's a 16-year row right behind Ms. Short. They were at the end. I have to get a new one to put Estefany for 2015 on there. The seventh grade champion just walked in from Cross Keys Middle School, Marissa Hughes. I have trophies for these students to take, that she'll put in her front trophy case at Cross Keys Middle School. Marissa has won several years in a row. She won sixth grade, she won fifth grade, now she's up to seventh grade and has won. Can I be more nervous? Good, come on? That's probably good. Tell me there'd be photographs. I know where the other one is. You have sticky tack. And the eighth grade champion is Yosinia Tinnan from Berkeley Middle School. Is Yosinia here? All of these students who won for their buildings, the 20 students also got to go compete in the Greater St. Louis one. And again, Estefany was the only one from Ferguson-Floreson to advance. But every one of those kids, this is difficult. The spelling bee has something to respect, what these kids can do, right? The academic and the intellectual and just, the words may look easy, but you're not staying up there by yourself in front of hundreds of people spelling words. So, bravo to those spelling bee kids. I wish more were here, but yay, Marissa's here.
If I could make a comment, I'm one of those old people that still take the newspaper, and it was very heartwarming to me to open up that paper, see that full-page ad of all those spelling bee winners and see one of our students in there. That was really made by day.
Before we move into the agenda item five, a little bit of housekeeping I forgot to do earlier. We do have comic cards available on the desk out there. If you wish to address the Board, we ask that you get the comic cards, get them filled
and all three high schools also had wrestlers receive medals.
out, and please hold them up, and one of the district staff will be happy to pick them up for you, okay?
And while we're at this, we point out that Dr. Thurman is still recovering from her surgery, and so she's excused for her absence tonight.
McClure High School, the head coach is John Combest.
Thank you.
This is Weixel. The Combs had four wrestlers qualify for state, Chris Minton, Lanell Owens, Josh Hewitt, If you would please come forward for the Ferguson-Floreson state wrestling competition. and Demetrius Thomas. I think we have a lot of wonderful students. Demetrius Thomas took third place in the 220-pound weight class in the state competition, So if the wrestlers and the coaches and principals would go ahead and come forward, you guys, you all can assemble in there. and was also selected as the newcomer of the year and wrestler of the year for his accomplishments I'll take that large group, so I'm going to give them a minute to get together, and with a record of 56 wins and only three losses. then I'll read about their accolades. McClure North with head coach Jake Lipinski. The Stars had four wrestlers qualify for state, Effie Osage, Kelton Tolliver, Terrell Pamkin, and Kalen Barton. Effie Osage received a fourth-place medal in the 138-pound weight class, and Kelton Tolliver received a fourth-place medal in the 285-pound weight class in a very tough tournament. Congratulations. McClure South Brooklyn High School with head coach Albert Harold. The Bulldogs had two wrestlers qualify for the state championship, Lawrence Woods and Jamal White. Horns received a fifth-place medal in the 132-pound weight class, continuing a nine-year streak of Bulldogs qualifying for state competition and having a state medal. Congratulations to all of our outstanding wrestlers on their accomplishments. We are so proud of you. And thank you to the coaches for their work with the wrestlers, and of course, to the parents. Without your support, we know this all can't be done. So, parents, if you would please stand, or grandparents, anyone here that's with our wrestlers, please stand. Thank you. Before I turn this over to Mr. Vogel, to give us our Support Person of the Year, I would like to ask the administration if next year for the Support Person of the Year and the Teacher of the Year, if we could have those from the buildings come to be recognized also, just to be the outstanding person in each building. I think that would be something nice, that we could see all of our outstanding people every year. Okay, the Support Person of the Year, Mr. Kevin Vogel, if you please introduce us?
Yes, Kathy Hiliker, would you please come forward, please? The Ferguson-Floreson School District named Ms. Kathy Hiliker its 2015 Support Employee of the Year. Ms. Hiliker is the office manager at Lee Hamilton Elementary School and has served the district for 17 years. Ms. Hiliker consistently goes above and beyond office manager expectations, mentoring students, developing and nurturing relationships with families, and working hard to support all staff members at Lee Hamilton. Ms. Hiliker successfully manages the demands of a busy office in the elementary school. The staff of Lee Hamilton and the district appreciate all that she does for the Ferguson-Floreson School District community. So would you like to have your family and friends stand as well?
Yeah. And now Kevin, if you would please, we'll do a drumroll to announce the Teacher of the Year.
With Erin King, please come forward, please. The Ferguson-Floreson School District has proudly named Erin King its 2015 Teacher of the Year. Ms. King is a math teacher, department chair, and a former graduate of McClure North High School. She has quite capably served the district for 10 years. Ms. King was selected for her many contributions to education and the district. She instills a love of learning in all her students by providing them with instructions tailored to individual needs and learning styles. Ms. King's classroom is widely creative environment in which her students are taught to become risk-takers and problem solvers capable of critical analysis. She is a student-first teacher who is a top-notch representative of all the great teaching that occurs in the Ferguson-Floreson School District. And Dr. Hopper would like to say a few words as well.
Please. Ms. King, I remember her first year as a teacher, and I know her now, her 10th year as a teacher. She just does an awesome job. And the most impressive thing to me when she got this award in the hallway from Mr. Leroux, first thing that she said was, "I'm just one of many great teachers at McClure North, and I'm just proud to be able to represent all of them." And so she, we couldn't do the things we do at McClure North and the Math Department without her. She's tremendous.
I would, and at first, like, really, this award really makes me kind of speechless, which is weird. And I wrote a lot of things down that I thought I might want to say, but I think the most important thing is that I'm really proud to work in a district that really values creativity and innovation. I really am. Like, in an era of such accountability, you know, when I came to, you know, Dr. Hopper, when I came to Kathy Vogel, when I said, "I want to change Al's for one. I want to make it a co-taught differentiated class, standards-based grading. I want to flip it where the kids are doing videos at home and we're doing all the cool stuff in the classroom," you know, and Dr. Hopper looked at me and he said, you know, "Admiral, go for it." That's what he calls me. And I think it's really cool that, you know, that I have some people here that really support teachers, and, you know, it's a district that really does support teachers. And, I don't know, all teachers need that. All teachers need recognition, and if people do one thing today, tomorrow, is go to a teacher and say, you know, "You're doing an awesome job." You know, because teachers don't hear that enough, and our kids need teachers that feel appreciated. And anyway, thank you so much. Thank you so much for honoring me.
This portion of the meeting is allocated for the Board to provide an update of current activities and events in the district that may be of special interest to Board members and the community. First up will be Mr. Ebert.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming out. First and foremost, I have to say that I contacted Dr. Don, Dr. Don Thurman. Kind of, kind of out of sorts here. I've been on the road a lot here, a lot of meetings, a lot of places, and I contacted Dr. Thurman, and she is doing better. I made sure I told her that without her here, I hope we can stay semi-sorty pretty well. But she's doing better, and we really miss her. I will read the, my position on the strategic plan is the finance. We have an update. Ferguson-Floreson School District will be hosting an informational meeting on Thursday, March 12. Tomorrow at 7:00 PM, the Administration's Center Staff Building area. Administration will be presenting information regarding the no-tax increase bond issue, which is on the ballot for April 7. On Monday, March 3, the district held its first employee wellness meeting. Committee worked on a survey which will be sent to all employees regarding the employee wellness plan. We had some very exciting conversations, and the committee is looking forward to implementing plans to improve employee wellness, well-being, and morale. And congratulations on this last item to everyone in negotiations. It's been finalized, which allows our finance office to start updating the final budget for year 15-16. Next week, the finance office will be receiving information from St. Louis County Assessor's Office and estimates of reassessed assessments of property in our area. The district will be submitting an estimated non-binding tax rate to the county in early April. So a lot going on in the finance area. Of course, everywhere I go and speak, I am the treasurer of Prop I, so I encourage everyone to get out and vote and attend this meeting tomorrow. I've got other things I have to do, but I am definitely going to try to get there, probably toward the end of the meeting. So anybody who asks questions for me now, or later, or tomorrow, I've been speaking so much about this. This is for the kids. The kids have got to have this, and I guess everybody knows where I stand on that. And trying not to ramble too much here, we've been in meetings, exciting meetings, behind the scenes with Dr. Joe Davis, so we're all kind of excited about his arrival in July. And last but definitely not least, I've been, like I said, to many different events throughout the district, but I have to mention Scholar Bowl again. I mentioned it last month. But this time, I thought, you know, maybe I was all excited last month because my son was there. So I thought, you know, I'm going to go to that other one. They do, like, I guess, I don't know how they exactly do it. Sheila Ward does. Does an awesome job with it. But I went to the one where my son wasn't, and it was probably as good or better. And, you know, and I question all the time, you know, not don't feel sorry for us, but there's a lot of hours and things like that, and, you know, everything you do in your life comes at the cost of something else. And I always wonder, you know, with kids I have at home. But I'll tell you, putting those medals around those kids next, I mean, it just re-energized me like you wouldn't believe, and it's kind of funny how they look up at you like, "Wow, he's a board member," you know? It just is so cool. I mean, I encourage everyone, definitely come out to the big event. I should know all the dates, but I know it's in April sometime. And there's two more events they're holding. I believe it's March 17th and 18th. 17th, 18th, 19th.
The final is Saturday, April 18.
I have been to that one before, previously, but it's kind of neat now that I know a little bit of what's going on, and I encourage everyone because the games and things they play is amazing, what they do, so, anyway. Well, thank you, Mr. Ebert. Mr. Ebert just leaned over to me prior to his, well, something like that. He said it's going to be very short tonight. As far as the stakeholder and community report, we had several things to mention, but I thought I would discuss what Mr. Ebert began to discuss, and that was Prop I. We do not generally check each other as to what we're going to be saying, so sometimes we overlap. In process is our effort to inform parents and voters about Prop I. Prop I is, of course, a no-tax increase bond issue. Passing this bond issue, of course, would benefit the district in a great way. Our CFO, Laura Medrusik, spoke to business owners at the Greater North County Chamber. That would be their February membership meeting, and we have secured their endorsement as well as NCI, which I believe is North County Incorporated. The section of the district's website is being used to provide information about Prop I. It contains a wealth of information. Please go on it and look at it. District Facebook and Twitter accounts will have repeated posts leading up to the election date regarding Prop I. A newsletter will be sent out two weeks before the election. The newsletter will target parents as well as frequent voters, and of course, all about Prop I. Short video has been produced in regards to Prop I and will be shared on both Facebook and Twitter. Twitter. Thank you. I do not have a...
Twitter.
Tweeter. No, I'd rather say it's a tweeter. I don't have that either, so that's all right. You're not the second time you corrected. That's all right. I don't mind. That's fine. All right. And when I get embarrassed, my ears turn red. Are they turning red? Yes, they are, okay. You're going to be real. All right, anyway. Yeah, automatic, well, no, we're not going there. Automatic phone calls to all parents, households is the main focus, is to encourage them to vote. Extremely important. An information night is planned for tomorrow night, as Scott alluded to. It will be held in the Staff Development Room. Laura Medrusik and Terry O'Neil will speak about the impact of Prop I on the district finance and facilities. Last on Prop I, I would like to also inform you that each and every board member has been very much involved in it. We are, I have plenty of signs in my car, if I can take some home, okay? And we have them. We encourage you all to get involved in it. It is essential to our district that this pass. We will pass it, we hope, and if we don't, we're coming back because we need it desperately. So we encourage, yes, and it is for all of you, and we encourage your participation in also. Thank you very much.
I'll just make one comment on Prop I. A lot has been said already, but as an mathematician, it's important to know that we need 57% of the vote to pass it. So just having 52% doesn't do us any good. So when we talk about encouraging people to come out and vote, it's really important. As far as academics go, last month, Dr. Diggs mentioned briefly that we were contacted by Philander Smith College, how they wanted to support our students with scholarships. They've had those scholarship days at the three high schools to the tune of $2,749,000 worth of scholarships. That is a lot of support for our kids, and that is just really neat that they contacted us and said, "Hey, how can we help you?" Another help that's happened is we met with Harris State, Harris Stowe State University. We've entered discussions with them about providing more tutoring and mentors for Griffith Elementary School. We're making contacts with different groups of people to bring more assistance into our elementary schools, which is really, really important. Two items that mark on your calendars, they're not until next month in April, but those of you that know me know I have a big spot in my heart for Little Creek. And on April 11, which is a Saturday morning, come out and help pull a honeysuckle. It's really great fun. It's good exercise, and it's really a fun morning. And then also, on the morning of April 25, two days, two weeks later, will be the annual birthday celebration out there. Tremendous demonstrations, just really a neat thing to get your kids out and see what goes on there. And I know you're tired of hearing me say this, but there's only three districts in the country that have anything like Little Creek. 97 acres, it will always be ours for educational purposes. It's really an amazing asset for our community.
Good evening, everybody. As my report on the facilities, of course, guess what? It hinges on Prop I. So that is a big part of our plan for the next five years, to keep our facilities upgraded, to increase our STEM, we keep calling it STEM, that's what I was first told, but now we're calling it STEAM, so, which is great. That'll be in the, again, the April elections, Prop I, I just mentioned. And if you don't need to go into his car, you can just go in the back of my truck, there's plenty of them back there, too. So, I had a meeting for the Green Committee at Little Creek, and that went well this past month. Mr. Trader was there, and we were there. Talked to Mr. Troxel, who runs the buses, and they're having great success with the new heaters that they've put into them. They don't have them all in yet, but long-term, that's going to save us a lot of money, the preheaters that heat up the engine block and heat up the cab of the buses without running the engine, so we're not spending diesel fuel to idle them for a long time. We're not spending labor for having people come in and start the buses. That's all automatic, and it works great. The team is very happy with the results of that, so I look forward to a full year of that, and we'll see what saves us on fuel consumption. So that's a wonderful thing. The other thing is that Ms. Hogshead and I have spent many, 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 many evenings and hours on negotiations, and it came to a successful conclusion last week. Another help that's happened is we met with Harris State, Harris州State University. We've entered, entered discussions with them about providing more tutoring and mentors for Griffith Elementary School. So we're making contacts with different groups of people to bring more assistance into our elementary schools, which is really, really important. Two items that mark on your calendars, they're not until next month, in April, but those of you that know me know I have a big spot in my heart for Little Creek. And on April 11th, which is a Saturday morning, come out and help pull a honeysuckle. It's really great fun. It's good exercise, and it's really a fun morning. And then also, on the morning of April 25th, two days, two weeks later, will be the annual birthday celebration out there. Tremendous demonstrations, just really a neat thing to get your kids out and, and see what goes on there. And I know you're tired of hearing me say this, but there's only three districts in the country that have anything like Little Creek. Ninety-seven acres, it will always be ours for educational purposes. It's really an amazing asset for our community.
Good evening, everybody. As my report on the facilities, of course, guess what? It hinges on Prop I. So that is a big part of our, our plan for the next five years, to, to keep our facilities upgraded, to increase our STEM, STEAM, we keep calling it STEM, that's what I was first told, but now we're calling it STEAM, so, which is great. That'll be in the, again, the April elections, Prop I, just mentioned. And if you don't need to go into his car, you can just go in the back of my truck, there's plenty of them back there, too. So I had a meeting for the Green Committee at Little Creek, and that went well this past month. Mr. Trader was there, and we were there. Talked to Mr. Troxel, who runs the buses, and they're having great success with the new heaters that they've put into them. They don't have them all in yet, but long-term, that's gonna save us a lot of money, the preheaters that heat up the, the engine block and heat up the cab of the, the buses without running the, the engine. So we're not spending diesel fuel to idle them for a long time. We're not spending labor for having people to come in and start the buses. That's all automatic, and it works great. The team is very happy with the results of that. So I look forward to a full year of that, and we'll see what, see what it saves us on fuel consumption. So that, that's a wonderful thing. The other thing is that Ms. Hogshead and I have spent many, 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 many evenings and hours on negotiations, and it came to a successful conclusion last week. I, I do have to, to call out Mrs. Medrusik on this one, because in years past, and I've been dealing with this for the last 20 years in one capacity or another, the finance end was always where the hassle came. And this year, there was no hassle. It was, it was perfect. And I want to thank you for that. It made, made quite enjoyable at the end. That's always the last item, but it was very enjoyable, so. And that's all I have to say for tonight.
And I am on the talent, which takes us into negotiations. So I would like to thank the administration team, but my heart, I've observed for many, many years, and my heart goes out to the FFNEA Executive Board and to all of the teachers and staff. Not that the administration didn't do a good job, but professionally, I just admire how you all took into consideration the love of the children as well as knowing our finances after Mrs. Medrusik did such a wonderful job presenting. So my hat and my heart goes out to the FFNEA for realizing what this district needs and standing behind it. And I just want to give you a standing ovation.
Hello? All right. I had the pleasure of attending the quarterly governing council meeting. I'm the alternate. I think that's W, me and Mr. Eber kind of switch off and on. It was an interesting meeting. A, it was a budget meeting that they had indicated they have 44% reserve ballots. So the special school district is doing very well financially, and they're very proud of that. I know they just had the recent tax levy that came through. They also, something I was very impressed with is that they released their comprehensive plan that really talked about the partnerships between the special school district and the traditional school districts. And it was amazing that some of the things that they're trying to put in place and work towards is our school district is already doing. We just had the subcommittee for the special school district just on, yesterday was that? When was that? Yesterday, I was unable to attend. I had some phone issues with my company, but Mr. Eber did go, you know, so I can throw it back over to you. But it was really wonderful, the partnership that this school district has with special school district, and how they really work together to provide a comprehensive education for all students that step through our doors. And it was something that just amazed me that other school districts apparently do not do, that we are so far ahead of them. So hats off to our school district and all the staff and teachers and everybody that's involved with that. I also was able to attend a scholarship fair, or information fair, that they had over at McClure, that I really did, where I was walking into. My son's a student up at McClure, and went in there, just wasn't, my expectations were not very high, obviously. I didn't know really what to expect. But apparently, this teacher, former teacher from Jenny, they go by Mr. T. I'm looking at Dr. Diggs, because she was the NCI. Was that?
Thomas Osley.
Now, is he still a teacher at Jenny's, or he's a former teacher? All right. Well, he, he realized, I guess with his own children, the struggles that they have finding scholarships. So he took it upon himself to go find money for kids. And he's a one-man machine, bringing universities together with corporations, and at any giving, given scholarship fair, millions of dollars are given away at these fairs. Students are required to bring their transcripts, there's an application, they just go around table to table, meet the college reps, and they're saying, come to our school, and we'll give you a free ride. And it's really amazing thing, and maybe at some point, I should have addressed this earlier, to have you come and actually give a presentation about this, because it was a really wonderful program. A lot of the criteria is similar to our A-plus program with the GPA and things, but it really just takes the initiative of the parents and the students to reach out. They have these scholarship fairs three times a year. I know the next...
Everyone has...
This past Saturday at Umsul, they had one. And I know they have one at SLU in October. Is that the one at SLU?
Yes.
It will be, okay. I'm sure we'll be posting that on our website and our Facebook.
Yes, September at SLU, and then February 1st is at Umsul.
Okay. So if you have a junior and senior that's looking to go on to college, really take a look at this opportunity, because it's incredible. And these are private colleges throughout the nation, as well as major universities like Mizzou, a part of it. Yes, Dr. Diggs?
I will say that Mr. Osley has made Ferguson Forest an entrance college district, so that is how Philander Smith was able to come directly to Ferguson Forest, and he's looking to bring more colleges directly to the district.
Whoa, that's awesome.
Mr. Green, you're up.
Good evening, board, Dr. Maroo, stockholders, members. How's everybody doing tonight? We have a few, I have a few announcements this time, and I'm gonna take a little bit more than 15 seconds. Negotiations, as everyone said, went great, and, you know, my motto was always win-win, and of course, it was win-win, just as I predicted. I personally would like to thank Lori Samelman, who is the lead of our negotiations team. She did an outstanding job getting everything together on our side and for both sides. I would like to thank all of the students and teachers from participating in the Martin Luther King Contest. I didn't mention it last time, but we did an outstanding job. Unfortunately, from what I've seen, we didn't have any state winners, but we did make significant increase from last year. Last year, we only had 32 entries. This year, we had 135 entries. So I'd like to thank the staff and the, and the schools for more participation. This past week, we had three members go to the ESP Conference in New Orleans, and they had a great time, and we learned a lot, and we plan on bringing things back to the district to help with our ESP members. Capitol Action Day was today, so we had a few of our members go to Jefferson City today to talk to and meet some of our representatives. Last but not least, I would just like to say, the next time we meet, we will have had spring break. So I hope everyone will enjoy their spring break with their children. I know that I'm going to enjoy mine, and I think the teachers will as well. Have a good evening. Thanks.
Dr. Maroo?
Good evening. As Frank just mentioned, we've got spring break ahead, but first, we gotta have to finish and get through the end quarter. And it's, it's Friday. So as with the rest of the school year, we just need to make sure that we continue on the course that we need to follow. Attendance every day. It's just diligence. It's diligence. We're, we're at a point that we're looking at, at hope and opportunities for the district, for our students. We recognize there are opportunities that exist where they're being called to our attention. Some of that occurs during negotiations. Sometimes it's through just regular communications with the community about things that we do right and some things that we don't, that, that we have opportunities to improve upon. And we do embrace these. It's, it's essential that we do. And I don't, I wonder sometimes if we communicate that well enough to people, that, that we do take it to heart when there are questions or concerns that are raised, because it matters. It matters to everyone here, it matters to those that don't attend, and it's essential if we're going to improve. Negotiations, we talk about negotiations, and sometimes people might just kind of think about money. And negotiations is about so much more than, than money. It's about our policies, yes, and, and working conditions. But frequently, it's about our student learning opportunities and the morale of the district, the morale of, of staff members, people in the community, you know, what's in the best interest of, of the district going forward. And we learn a lot, awful lot about ourselves during that process, and, you know, it, it helps serve us as we, we seek to improve. Other, I guess something else that I might want to mention here, we've got an interview with a couple of our schools, equity interviews, that, that we've been asked to participate in with, with the state. And it gives us a chance to, to discuss and hear, get other feedback about the challenges associated with providing the best teachers and administrators, you know, to meet schools' needs. We have some other schools do, too. Look forward to those conversations, to, to, to kind of share some of the thoughts that we might have, as well as listening to what others and what the state might have, and to see what they can do to help address that. So that's what I have right now, and I just thank you for the opportunity to express it.
Thank you. I do want to give an update on Dr. Joseph Davis, our, our next superintendent. He will be returning back to our district the week of April 6th for several days to have meetings. He's primarily focusing, I think, on this trip for the elementary principals. Just let you know, right there in math testing. But we'll be coordinating that with the administration. But he's anxious to return to the district, kind of get his arms wrapped around it, meet with as many people as possible, not only within the district, but community stakeholders as well. He'll also be returning in the middle, latter part of May. He will be at the graduation with that as well. And he'll be moving into the district about the first or second week of, of June. So he will be returning to us the week of April 6th, so just wanted you to know that. All right. Public comments. The board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of the floor meeting. Prior to the comment period, participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and topic to be addressed, and will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board are requested to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and in keeping with district policies 4054, 4059, and personnel law, which should, they should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the board will not directly respond to speakers during the public comment period, I, as the board president, may make some clarifying remarks at the end of the comment session. Comment cards are available. If you have any out in the audience and you still want to turn them in, please let us know.
I'm sorry?
First up will be Ms. Toni Burrow.
I'm Toni Burrow, executive director of the PAC Community Resource Center, and I have a couple of comments. On my card, I checked off number six, Support Staff of the Year. I am so glad that we recognize all of those that support us so well. I do want to add a few. I want to talk about Rich Miller's group, if he's still here, and also facilities, and the money lady, the Bing lady. I represent the STEM. You'll be hearing about that when you look at I. And it's science, technology, education, engineering, and math. And the A is for art. I don't believe we can do anything about education without art. Thank you. And I took my group to Jefferson City last Wednesday, the robotics group. Had a little hiccup along the way, but I was not concerned, because I knew Rich Miller and his team was available to me. I knew that transportation was available to me. I knew that facilities was available to me. I had no hiccups. We got to Jefferson City. We had on our I love Fur bright yellow shirts, black letters, packed. We stopped at a restaurant, and there were some people going to Jefferson City to talk to some of the congressmen. And I heard this, oh, you're from Ferguson? And my kids, you know, I, I told, my mother had 16 kids, I'm number 15. She always told us, you represent me. Well, all of these kids, I told them, you represent me. One after another, they were speaking up, oh, you talking about proud? That was me. We got to Jefferson City, and they had been alerted that I was coming. I go there about three times a month. So they knew that I was coming. When I got there, they were standing, I had Courtney Curtis, Maria was doing something serious, so I let her go. But we had people standing in line, waiting to shake the hands of the people that we had brought with us. I thank you all for making it hiccup-free, because you helped get us there. That's what I want to talk about, STEAM. I noticed that you talk about STEAM in here, and you open up a center. We have been doing STEAM at PACT on a large scale. I want to thank you, too. I just appreciate you so much. I want to thank all you guys that come out. We have Super Saturdays at Walnut Grove, every Saturday between 8:30 and 12:30, and we're doing STEAM at its best. We're bringing people to talk about careers. I'm convinced that if our children, our students do not get into STEM now, in 15 years, they won't have a job. I'm promoting Proposition I. I'm telling you that the kids that we are, and you, but you know this, you spend some time with them, the kids that we are teaching STEM to right now with the A, I call it plus A, is a whole different group. The respect, the focus, the I want to be, now they know that it's possible that for them to be anything that they want to be. I tell them every week, the sky is not your limit, and they're believing it. I tell them that we got people here in this district that will do what they have to do to get them there. They're believing that they can reach the sky. They're singing this song, I Believe I Can Fly, because of what you guys do. I'm encouraging you to go to the Pope. Vote. It's not gonna cost you a dime, but what it is gonna do, I'm planning on living to 80 if I don't die. I really am. I got, I got a plan. And what I need is for these kids to be ready to take care of me. And to do that, we gotta get them this education. The last thing I want to talk about, if I think of any stuff, okay, scholarship fairs. I just want to tell you something about the scholarship fair. Every year, I send kids to the scholarship fair. Anybody that knows anybody, all they need is their resume. It doesn't have to say anything. And guess what? They guarantee the money. They don't have to do anything at these scholarships, but show up. It is a sin before God not to go, because all you have to do is have a piece of paper with your name on it. And if they can't write a resume, send them to me. I'm good at it. So send them to me. That's the last thing. But Proposition I, I'm asking, and all of you, thanks for putting the sign in my yard, I appreciate it, I'm asking all of you to come out and vote for this. It is so essential to what we need for our children. If you need somebody to carry your signs, I'm good for it. I got a wagon. Thank you so very much.
Joan, you're up next.
Well, you're 80 and beyond. Where did you go? As you know, I think of you a lot, and I'm so glad I came here tonight, because I needed to hear good news. I want to tell you, we are starving for good news. I'm so glad to turn off the news and get here tonight. I'm gonna add a little more good news. You know, I, I watch Jeopardy. I tape it, I watch it all the time. Well, there was a, a man who was in a teacher's, two-week teacher Jeopardy thing, if you didn't see it, and he was from St. Louis, Missouri. He won, he was in the final, and he would have won, except he pressed his button, he would go like this, press his button, so he lost a little... Well, there was a man who was in a teacher's, two-week Teacher Jeopardy thing, if you didn't see it, and he was from St. Louis, Missouri. He won, he was in the final, and he would have won, except he pressed his button, he would go like this, press his button, so he lost a little bit of time, or else he would have been a $100,000 pitcher. And then, just right after that, when they had the regular Jeopardy, well, here comes a lady from Missouri, in Arnold, Missouri. She was from Arnold, Missouri. She won three times. So, man, I'm there, good news. And it was great. But then they ask her why she got there and the stuff. She said, "On a teacher," she gave the name. She said, "He would, in class, he would do a little trivia." And she said, "From that trivia thing that they did in class, she was curious about this and curious about that," so her knowledge really exploded into different areas. Maybe we need a little more trivia in class. And then there was a young man who was on Jeopardy, a 12-year-old with the kids thing, and he said the same thing. He said his father would drag him to all the trivia things, and that's why he got interested in all kinds of stuff too. So, and that's my good news, whatever. And I still keep thinking about you and hearing all this stuff about Ferguson, Morrison, and whatever. And I thought, well, maybe the schools need to have a campaign to really get together and have a campaign that everybody, every teacher, every student could really get together. And so, I kind of got a campaign in my mind. And so, my campaign is... Stamp out bad. To stamp out bad. Bad speech. Bad everything. Bad grade. Anything that's bad, stamp out bad. And then you want to tell them, "Well, kids, when you stamp out bad, what do you got left? Good." Okay, let's hear it again. Absolutely. You've got to get them all together, and then... Well, and I'm so glad to be here tonight to hear the good news that you all put out. I want to tell you, spelling's wonderful. Me, it's spell check. So, that's all really good news and whatever. So, the other thing that I thought about was, one of my very favorite programs was argue smarter than a fifth grader. And I think maybe we should have a little program that gets a fifth grader together and have argue smarter than a fifth grader. I would certainly volunteer my time and money to help this talk out. And as far as your vote is concerned, I can guarantee quite a few senior citizens' votes. I can guarantee you the Bridge Club vote. I can guarantee you Northside Art Association vote. So, count on me.
FFAA addresses?
Boy, this is a hard act to follow. Super quick.
Wish for the bad sign there.
Yeah, yeah.
No bad, stamp out bad.
No bad, no.
Stamp out bad.
Exactly. Dr. LaRue, this kind of piggybacks off what you had to say. During negotiations, a couple of things that the Board, some changes that potentially they're thinking about, that there's some interest in, that there's some listening to, as you said, some parent feedback and such. I would just like to really encourage the Board to have some conversations, and because the negotiation's time can be such a compressed amount of time, you guys know that, that some of the things that maybe we're thinking about, looking at, talking about, might need some research, some brainstorming, some thinking about. So, I just really want to encourage the Board, if there's some ideas that they have, that they reach out to us, and maybe together we can do some good things. Thanks.
We'll take a short recess until 8:10. All right, agenda item number 11, the 2015-2016 School Year Calendar. This is for Board Action. And Kelvin, Dr. D.
Earlier in the year, we brought a tenth of calendar forward for the Board of Education as a first reading. Through negotiations this year, we have revised that calendar and brought it forward this evening for your approval.
I move we adopt the agenda, the 2015-16 agenda.
Second.
I would just like, before we vote on it, to ask the Calendar Committee for next year to please look and think about the half-days. It's very difficult on families, and I think that if we have whole days, it would be better for the whole educational system for our children. Really encourage that now, start thinking about it by the next year.
And when's the first day of school, just for public consumption?
I believe we've got it only, it's August 12th, November 13th?
August 13th. Thursday the 13th.
So, the school year's not even over yet, but we're looking to the first day of school next year.
And I would add, I know that I was not on the Calendar Committee, but I know the discussion has come up, and Kevin Vogel's Committee about academics and that business of the half-days is discussed in several locations, not just in the calendar, and that is a concern.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the 2015-2016 School Year Calendar, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, ayes have it. All right, Negotiations Package, culmination of a lot of hard work.
We have recently concluded negotiations with the FFNA. It's been a very positive experience, been a lot of conversations, discussions regarding policies, and how we can do things together to even strengthen our district even more. And so, we bring forward to you this evening a package of new policies, requesting your approval. And we also have the marketing chair from the FFNA here.
Just want to say that we tackled a lot this year, and I'm very pleased that we were able to get through and get some items together that were of benefit for both the district and staff, so, thank you.
I move we adopt the Negotiations Package.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion from the Board?
I just have a comment. I've been around a long time, since '72, and as far as I can remember, of course, memory goes as you give a look, I can't remember being settled before spring break where our teachers, including negotiations team, can actually enjoy spring break. I remember the number of years that negotiations team, both administration and teachers, basically missed out on spring break because they had to be worrying about negotiations. So, I think hats off to both sides for making that happen. The other thing is that, you know, you can't understand, since you all don't get to see what we get to see, but I read everything, and it takes forever. It's in five different files, it's so big. And this is really, really a big deal, the amount of work that goes into making this happen. And I appreciate everything everybody's done to make it work well.
If it was okay, if there are members of the negotiating teams from either side who are here this evening, can we ask if they could stand? Can we recognize? And if I could, I'd like to recognize one person who I think did an outstanding job for us, helped us to stay focused, helped us to stay organized as part of this, and with the massive amount of policies we took to look at this year, that was a very important thing for us people to do, to stay organized. And that's where I'm standing. A big X B.
I can move an agenda.
Any other discussion? All in favor of accepting Negotiations Package as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, ayes have it. Consent Agenda, would Mr. Morris please read out the disbursements?
Payroll, teacher and non-teacher, $4,413,334.12. Operational disbursements, $1,928,722.74, for a grand total of $6,342,056.86.
I move we accept the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, ayes have it. Curriculum and Instruction Building Level Progress. We'll be getting reports from McClure North, Halls Ferry Elementary, and Vodie Elementary.
Good evening. Dr. Hopper is here, McClure North Principal, to present a unique program at McClure North, the Accountability Plan Update, which shared with the Board of Education. And I know that as soon as Dr. Hopper's done presenting, he's going to lead to head to Lindenwood University, where the girls' basketball team is playing in a...
Washington.
Playing against Washington in a sectional?
It's a first-round playoff.
First-round playoff at the district, so their game started at 7:45, so he's going to head over there to support the girls' basketball team. So, Dr. Hopper?
Thank you. Thank you, Board, and also thank you to our audience. I'm going to bring some folks up with me as well. When I was asked to talk about a specific or unique program at McClure North, when I was asked to talk about a specific or unique program at McClure North, one thing I wanted to highlight was also, we're, as a district, asking for money here in April, I want to talk about Project Leadway. And so, the request is for a STEAM initiative, which is STEM with the addition of art. And, you know, when I talked to Mr. Castro and Mr. Owen, we've been talking about this for a few weeks now, you know, there's so many great things that are going on downstairs in our terrace level, that I just wanted our community and our public to have an actual opportunity to see these things. And so, I've asked Mr. Castro and Mr. Owen, pick some of their best students, and these are three I'm in right here, and they will introduce them when they get to their portion of the court. First of all...
Here's the co-chair, Sam.
Sure. First of all, Mr. Castro.
Good evening. I'm here, I teach Introduction to Engineering Design, which is the entry-level class in North for Project Leadway, first class. I have Remy Awada here with me, he's one of my top students, and he's going to talk about one of his projects that he did earlier, he actually just finished it. Unfortunately, we get to most of our fun stuff in a few months at the end, so we have the best thing that we can show at this point in terms of something really interesting to show you guys. First thing, what are we doing in the program? This year, McClure North piloted the first all-female section for Introduction to Engineering Design. So, in the past, we've had one or two females, very, very challenging to get them to kind of buy-in. Now, we have a class that they can just sign up for, we can put them all in one classroom together, they feel more comfortable, and actually it's been a very, very big success for us. We sponsored a trip to Boeing for young women. We just came back two weeks ago, the district set this up for us, Jay Bowe, which actually helped us out. This was during E Week, Engineering Week, a couple of weeks ago. The women actually got a choice, or a chance to drive an unmade vehicle. Young lady in the top, that's Citi Rogers, she's a 10th grader at North, she's actually controlling that Jeep Cherokee with a remote control, like a video game. There's nobody in the car driving it, it's just going on its own, she's controlling every aspect of it. They also had an opportunity to work through some virtual reality, which is a new concept for them, nobody has ever seen it before. We also got to use the real flight simulation. This is the actual real simulation that the pilots used from Boeing, it's a true F-18, sorry about that. They got to land it, they actually got to go into battle and go on real simulations just as if they were a pilot, so they got to feel what it's all about. Now, I'm going to turn it over, actually, one of the things I forgot was our portfolio. One thing we're starting to do in North is we're trying to develop a digital portfolio, you know, in today's age, everything's digital. We're trying to actually create it to where a student can start in my class, Introduction to Engineering Design, and then pass it on, and we can pass this portfolio on to our next teacher, which would be Mr. Owen. And then he can pass it on, actually, he teaches the next two classes. And then hopefully, when they reach the capstone class of computer-integrated manufacturing, engineering, design development, they have all of the work that they've had since they were freshmen in high school, so they can see themselves developed. This is actually what, this is Remy's portfolio up on the screen, just a couple screenshots, very easy to see, you can upload pictures. At this point, we've been doing it so long, now they know every single thing we do, that's good. Every final project, they're going to snap a picture. Recently, we've been able to get digital cameras for every other student in the class. So, we have 12 or 14 digital cameras that are split between the class, so they have the option that as soon as they're ready, they start taking pictures and upload them on the screen. And that's saved for them, they can take and copy this portfolio and take it on to college with them. And we've actually had students take their portfolio college, or the portfolio from Project Leadway on to college, especially if they pursue engineering, they're trying to get accepted into this program, or something along those lines. I'm going to give Remy an opportunity to tell him, talk about the project that we did just recently, it's called the Desktop Organizer. The reason I chose Remy is because this project had very, very specific criteria, and the hardest aspect of it was it was only two weeks in length, which usually our projects in Project Leadway run a month to six weeks in length. I gave him only two weeks, and he had to work with what he had. So, I'm going to let him talk for a second. This is Remy Awada, a freshman in McClure North.
Hello, so, here you see the Desktop Organizer. As Mr. Castro said, we only had two weeks to do this, unlike the other projects, like the puzzle cube you saw earlier, we got about a month on that. We had certain constraints on the project that we had to follow, such as you had to have six objects that had to fit into it, along with five parts minimum. And so, here is the doors right there, you see hinges, and the tray right there, it's a little cup holder. And inside the door, you can actually fit some pens, pencils, erasers, and whatnot in there, and that's the flap that closes it, because the box actually closes into a just smaller rectangular box that's six by 12 by 10 inches in dimensions. And that's the opposite side, that's a little tray to put whatever you need on it, and a little full of plastic right there, you can put pencils, pens of any size right there, and along with erasers along the edge. The bottom part, the little slit, that's where that fits 8.5 inches by 11-inch papers and folders and such, when the box is open, you just slide that in to close the box. And then right there on the top, you see those two flaps right there, that actually opens up into a whiteboard that fits into it when the box is closed. It just folds out on hinges, and then lies against the box when you're closing the box.
I'm going to turn the mic over to Mr. Owen, who teaches our Digital Electronics classes and our Principles of Engineering classes, which are next two behind Introduction to Engineering Design.
POE Principles of Engineering is a class they usually take after IED, they don't have to, that's generally how it goes. It's kind of a survey class where they learn lots of different things about, or lots of different topics, not a lot of depth, but a lot of breadth, where they learn things about, you know, all the different courses they might run into if they choose to go into engineering in college, a lot of math, a lot of science, some computer programming, which is kind of what you can almost see in the background on the monitor, and some robotics. Like Mr. Castro's classes, most of the cool stuff are kind of, we're not really quite there yet, we're just now doing the robotics just now, but here is a project I had them do early, just to get them a taste, this is what Jason Piper will just say a couple things about, this is, Jason, he is a senior at North in the POE class, and he'll just talk a little bit about the...
What this is, is this a catapult that we built from scratch using the VEX robotic building system, and uses VEX... And uses VEX program to operate the switches and fire the catapult, shooting a ping pong ball across the room, hopefully. Most of us didn't get there, but.
The switches you can see are actually programmed with the computer, you can program the computer to talk to the brain, the cortex is on the left. And it, you know, the switches are all controlled by the program that they can run, you know, they're learning how to write that stuff, like now, actually, we got another couple shots. Digital Electronics is the other class that we have at North. It's a more specific class that's really kind of designed to be, not exactly like a freshman-level circuits or electronics class, but pretty close. In fact, this year, we just now started giving college credit through flow for the course. But yeah, here's a, not a lot of bells and whistles in what we do, a lot of the payoff doesn't really all that exciting, you know, a lot of work and then just the light comes on when you celebrate. But here's a couple of projects that were kind of cool that another senior here that's in Digital Electronics, I made a conference we'll talk about today.
In our Digital Electronics class, what we did was, that was a number generator that we got to assemble ourselves during soldering, and during the first week, we got to go over the safety rules of soldering, and we got to learn about capacitors, resistors, and microchips and learn how they work. Then after that, that's when we got to assembling the random number generator, which goes up to a number of six, like a dice roll, and it randomly generates the number. On the right-hand side, which is our breadboard, that's what we use to work with like frequencies and work with a wire and a lightning, and figure out how to read and works.
Yeah, that's the, you know, I'm always worried about teaching the soldering towards being in a class, because I don't necessarily know the kids all that well, I figure one of them burned themselves or something, but fortunately, you know, I'm trying to hurt myself, me. Integrated circuits they got plugged in there, I have my suffering fingers on my finger and blood all over, Mr. Hurdles.
Just to wrap up, this is a quick demonstration of some of the things that are going on with our PLTW program. Again, the district is asking for our community's support right now for the STEM initiative to keep pushing these types of things in the school district. You know, three young men behind me did an awesome job, but there's a lot of great students over at McClure North right now, doing these things each and every day. And the two teachers behind me are awesome PLTW teachers, I wouldn't trade for anybody, and they do a good job, and they've really been taking the program in a great direction. Next week, we get our recertification for PLTW with the state organization. And, you know, it just makes me excited to see the things that they're involved with and that they're doing, because these are our future engineers. And going back to Mr. Kastrop's original statement about trying to get more female involvement with the program, to me, that's a must, because when you look at Rollin and University of Missouri and some of the local engineering schools, it's just, there's no female populations whatsoever. And so, we've been actively been trying to recruit our female students to get involved in the program, because we want more female, you know, involvement. So, thank you. We have parents, we have one parent in the back here.
Thank you, Dr. Hopper, and I'd also like just to note that our two Project Lead the Way teachers, Mr. Kastrop and Mr. Owen are both a former graduate as well.
Good evening. Well, you know, what's exciting is the presentations Halls Ferry School and Vought will be sharing with you today, just ties right into our STEM focus. So, I am excited at this time to ask Dr. Washington, and she is a new doctor, she just received her doctorate about two months ago, so I'm going to round the call. And she is from Vought Elementary School.
Good evening, wonderful Board of Education, Dr. LaRue, Ms. Margie, and my colleagues and community members, how's everybody?
Wonderful.
Good, so glad to hear it. Well, I am just very excited this evening to report the wonderful things that have been going on at Vought Elementary, we are just super excited. This year, I wanted to focus on building partnerships within the community. I'm a firm believer in that it takes a village to raise a child, and I know that through community collaboration and partnerships, Vought, great things will be happening in Vought. So, I really made a concerted effort to hone in on that this year, and I'll talk about that with you in deeper detail. That's a picture of our beautiful school that's located in the heart of Ferguson, two doors down from City Hall, so we love that. Points of pride, and I won't go into much detail, but one point of pride that I would like to mention is that we are a ELL center, English language learners, or English as a second language, and we, we love it. Because we embrace the diversity with all of our students, we have students from Mexico and just all over the country, and it's just so wonderful to see them in their classrooms. And we traditionally have done very well academically also, we've received multiple PBIS awards over the last four years. But I really want to hone in on the inspiration for new partnerships, and I kind of talked about that. I love STEM, science, technology, engineering and math, and we've really made it a point to stress that. As a matter of fact, a few years ago, in 2012, we were a STEM initiative school, and we had teachers from grades, represented from grades third, fourth, fifth and sixth, that had training with Washington University. And they brought back that into the classroom, and it was just amazing how learning came alive. Teachers became facilitators of learning, students became critical thinkers, so it's just been amazing on the progress that we've made with, with STEM, so we are very excited about that. And recently, on February 28th, we were blessed with the opportunity to partner with the Mount City Medical Forum, as well as the Archway Chapter of the Links. And we had a huge day at the St. Louis Science Center, it was Saturday, February 28th, and if you all recall, that day, it was snowing and it was a rough day, so I was worried to death, hoping that we would have a great turnout. But when I tell you over a hundred families came, and it was just phenomenal, it was doctors from Washington University and St. Louis University. The Mount City medical doctors gave out healthy snacks to our students. The Mount City Dental Association provided cute little sacks with the toothbrush and toothpaste, because February was National Dental Month. So, it was very exciting, and the Science Center specifically had their own room for us, dedicated to Vought Elementary. And the Science Center workers, their committee, did all types of cool experiments, and our kids just went crazy, so we, it was just a wonderful event, and so much so, they were so impressed with us. That on this Friday, I will actually meet with two ladies, Frida Smith and Ms. Pam from the Science Center, as well as two of the Mount City medical doctors, to see if we could take this further. They are interested in actually having a science camp. At Vought the first week of June, and they were, will bring in their own staff to come in to teach our students. So, of course, I'll be speaking with Dr. LaRue and Dr. Bland to make sure that that's okay, but I, I think it's just a wonderful opportunity, and just feel so blessed about it. And the Mount City medical doctors even want to come in and mentor our students in those STEM careers, because it's so important, as we know with STEM, at this time, especially in the U.S., it's not enough people to fill those, they don't have the skill sets to fill those jobs in those STEM areas, so I'm just elated about it. And we attribute our success to STEM driving our instruction, so we're looking forward to continuing those partnerships. As a matter of fact, on next Tuesday, we have another partnership with the Magic House. And the Magic House is providing two buses for our families, it's free of choice, charge, just like the Science Center event was totally free. And that will also be a STEM night at the Magic House, so we are just excited and elated about that, we look forward to that on next Tuesday. Other partnerships, we do the Terrific Kid program with the Ferguson Kiwanis Club, and Mrs. Klein, who's a Ferguson Kiwanis member, is simply awesome. And her and I go around to each of the classrooms, this happens twice a month, and so excited, the little kids that are selected for Terrific Kids, there's a student from each classroom that is selected to be a Terrific Kid, whether it be the teacher that selects it or other students. And it ties into our PBIS focus, for this month, our PBIS focus is respectful. So, the students that are selected to be the Terrific Kid have shown those great traits of being respectful, and then we come around and the students get a ribbon, a pencil and a certificate, designating them as the Terrific Kid. So, they are just so excited, because that gives them bragging rights for that day, you know, as one of the top kids, so we love it. And as you can see, we have other programs as well, Vision and Gateway Dental, and we love our Oasis tutors, monthly PTO meetings. Recently, in January, in 2013, we were the Monsanto School of Excellence, so I try to keep that connection going, and we had an all-school assembly where every student in the school received a free backpack filled with school supplies. And as you can see, you can see the, the joy and the excitement on their faces, and we even, the students gave the members of Monsanto and Kismar thank you cards after, so that was just a wonderful event. So, the staff and I just thrive on those partnerships, because they really have been making a difference, bless you. We are working hard with our attendance goal, we've initiated this year the NBA Never Been Absent Club, and we meet once a month, the counselor and the team, trying to promote students coming to school each and every day and on time. And we're well on our way to that, to meeting our 90/90 attendance goal, so we're excited about that, that's a new initiative. And I know I'm running out of time, so I'm rushing. Achievements, you can just kind of peruse that, we are a PBIS School of Excellence, and our students do a great job with behavior, academics and citizenship. So, we, we are just very elated about that. And this is our, in the main hallway, you will see our Vought's pathway to proficiency, Vought's pathway to proficiency board, and that has our attendance, our behavior and our latest star results. And this Friday ends the window for star, but, but looking at them, it seems like the students are really doing well. So, as I wrap up my presentation, I'd like to have my awesome staff to stand, my motto is it takes dreams to make a dream. And I'm just so appreciative of them, they work so hard, and it is showing in our results, so thank you so much.
And so, at this time, we're gonna talk some more about some of our sciences we're growing at the elementary level. Those sciences are at Halls Ferry Elementary School, and we have a new doctor, also, actually, Dr. Washington and Dr. Hazel were in the same doctoral program together, so congratulations to Dr. Hazel.
Good evening, board. Community members, staff and families, I'm so happy to be here this evening, it's a privilege to serve as the principal at Halls Ferry Elementary, and we have a lot of learning and growing going on, and literally growing. I want to point out the two, three pictures at the bottom, on the, the first picture there is one of our kindergartners writing his narrative about a small moment in time. And then, on the other side, we have a second grader who's writing his opinion about why Piggy and the Elephant are his favorite book series. And then, in the middle, we have some of our very curious second graders exploring a plant to figure out what is going to sprout out of that plant. So, I'm gonna talk briefly about writer's workshop and the writing that we're doing, and then also the installation of a garden at Halls Ferry Elementary. So, writer's workshop, with the support of the instructional coach that we have at Halls Ferry and our B L T team, we developed the frameworks to support teachers to implement the workshop this year. And so, what we know about if we want kids to write, we need to give them opportunities to write a lot, to become better writers. And so, with the workshop framework, teachers provide them a brief mini lesson that is very focused, and then students write and write and write and write more. And what we're doing is building their writing stamina. So, there's three of our scholars that are working on their writing. While the teachers, after the teachers give the mini lesson, they launch the students off to write, and then teachers confer with writers every day. So, while the kids are writing, they are conferring and meeting the students about their individual writing goals that they have specifically based on their needs. Our fourth, fifth and sixth graders have really hooked on to technology, several of our teachers put some requests out on Donors Choose, and we actually got 12 Chromebooks. And so, these young writers are using their Chromebooks to research their opinion papers, to decide which standard that they're gonna take, so they can present their claim and then their counterclaim. The teachers also embraced the Chromebook, so I was very excited about that, so our fifth and sixth graders actually published their final paper on the Chromebook. The teacher would, could then put them all in a folder, and instead of taking 60 folders home to grade, she just click on the Chromebook and there they all are, it's absolutely amazing. She shared her folder with me, so one weekend, I was so curious about what the papers looked like, I started going into the folders, and I would write a comment about, ooh, I liked how you introduced that, it caught my attention, and then I would do a little, would you consider this? And we happened to have one student that actually looked at that and then changed her, revised her paper before it actually got graded by her teacher. So, it's been a really fun experience to watch our kids use the Chromebooks, and then how we can give them feedback more quickly, and then helping each other also. Of course, data drives everything that we do, so with writing, we do a pre-assessment and a post-assessment. This is just a sample from our first grade classroom, Ms. Schumer, she's here this evening, so these are six of her students. The white are the pre-assessments in those areas that are listed, so we're scoring those, and then the blue is their post-assessment. We basically norm and collaboratively grade the papers, so we did that as grade-level teams with the instructional coach, Megan Amidola, who's here this evening, and myself, so that we would have inner grade reliability, and we would know that we were, we could be reliable when we scored. What this then does for us, if you look at the yellow rule, it shows us the trends, what are strengths for this particular group of kids, what are areas that we need to focus on? So, strengths for this group, elaboration and craft, they were, they did some nice jobs elaborating and using the craft that they were taught during the informational unit. But it also points out that punctuation was a lower area, and the lead and the endings were of lower areas, so that would be areas for target instruction later on. Okay, the other thing is when we talked about STEM, so our third, fourth, fifth and sixth grade teachers went through STEM in 2012, the same year that Vought did. And the second grade teachers were like, what's there for us, what can we do? And so, we, we started to develop this dream, and basically, from one teacher, that we would, she would like to have a garden in the back of Halls Ferry. We have nice campus, so we have plenty of room, and so, with her work and accessing some funding through Great Way Greening, and the assistance of an office aide, Peggy Dussold, who has tons of information about gardening, we installed a garden. we installed a garden on September 4th with eight beds. So, these visuals are, as you can see, constructing the beds. The students helped with the construction of the beds, transferring the dirt to wheelbarrows and then into the beds, and then, you know, getting the beds basically right to the point that we could then plant. We had 325 students, all the students got to do something with the shovel and the soil. It was a lot of fun. We had 18 volunteers, all the staff members came out and helped. It was just a wonderful day. And the result was what collaboration can accomplish. So, in basically a day, we installed, filled, and had eight beds ready to be planted. So, there they are. Three days later, we planted radishes, lettuce, kale, carrots, swish chard. What else?
Broccoli.
Broccoli, arugula, all of that. So, you can see, right. Thirty-seven days after planting the radishes, our second graders picked their first radishes. They described them as spicy and hot. And they were. So, they, we harvested, basically, you know, we explored, they measured, they made predictions about how tall things were going to be, and then harvested, actually picked, weighed, and cleaned. And then we handed the vegetables off to our cafeteria staff, two of who are which here, Ms. Sarah and Ms. Kelly, and then did the next steps in order for us to actually serve them in the cafeteria. The students harvested 57 pounds of vegetables this year. The broccoli in the center is what was the result of that plant they were exploring in that first slide. Do you see that piece of that broccoli head that they got out of that plant? It was amazing. So, it was really from farm to table, right from Halls Ferry Falcon Garden Farm, right to the Halls Ferry table. And so, we want to thank Airmark for partnering with us to make this happen. Kids get excited about eating the things they grew and picked themselves. So, it was just an amazing experience, and I just appreciate the whole staff for embracing the writing and this type of activity at Halls Ferry. Today, at 2:30, I had second graders coming in with hands full of worms to tell me how healthy our soil was and it was ready to plant cabbage. Do you know what Kamara, the second grader, asked me? "Do you know how many hearts a worm has, Mr. Hazel?" I'm like, "No, how many?" Five. She just was so excited. So, all these worms, so they tell me that the garden's ready, and we've got, what, 53 cabbage plants to plant. Now, none of this would be possible without the staff that is here tonight and the relationship that we have with our families. So, I'd like the staff to stand. Thank you. And what is unique about the staff is I also want the staff that have students at our school, that their kids go to our school, raise their hand. Do you see all the students that have kids in their school? And I just want to recognize Ms. Fitzpatrick, just thank you for the garden. That's been a wonderful experience. So, or come over. Maybe bring some gloves. And thank you for your support and the opportunity to share what we're doing at Halls Ferry. Drop by any time.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Bland, I hope you don't go too far. You're up next.
Oh, I am.
Maybe this is a good kid. A group to...
Yes.
Or is Dr. Ward doing it?
Jessica, come on up. Actually, Jessica Bidding is, where is Jessica Bidding?
I'm going to ask Jessica Bidding to share the information. She and Dr. Ward have worked extremely hard on our balanced literacy model, so I'm going to ask her at this time to share information regarding our reading assessment kit.
Good evening, Board. I'm Jessica Bidding. The reading assessment kits are a comprehensive system for one-to-one reading assessment. The kits will allow teachers to systematically match students' instructional and independent reading abilities to appropriate text and instruction. This will provide the most current effective measurement tools and teaching supports for improved decision-making and data reporting on behalf of students. In order to make sure all students are reading on or above grade level, students must be engaged in instruction that begins where the readers are by addressing individual needs. The reading kits will allow teachers to differentiate within their classroom. The cost of the kits is $22,358 and will be funded through the district textbook account.
I move we approve the reading assessment kits.
Second.
Motion to be made by Ms. Hockseth, second by Mr. Ebert. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the reading assessment kit, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Hearing none, ayes have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Summer school program approval. Dr. Bland? Yeah, she does. Keep dragging her back.
The district plans to operate a summer learning program for elementary, middle, and high school students starting summer of 2015. The program is designed to meet the needs of students requiring additional instructional support, reading below grade level, in jeopardy of being retained, or being, or behind in high school credits. The cost for the elementary summer school learning program is $83,467.85 funded through Title I funds. The cost for the secondary summer school program is $100,758 through district funds.
I move we approve the summer school program.
Second.
Motion to be made by Ms. Hockseth, second by Mr. Ebert. Any discussion?
Is this more or less than last year or are compared to last year?
Same budget. So, it was two years, we are third year if we reduce the budget, so it's been the exact same amount.
I'm going to ask a hypothetical. If we had unlimited resources, how realistically, how many kids, I mean, we can always do better, but how many kids would actually, could you increase this to that would actually attend?
We probably could double the enrollment of students in the program if we had unlimited resources.
Well, and they would attend, it wouldn't just be, well, a number of, like doubling, you could actually get that attended.
I believe we could get that attended.
It's just a thought, that's all.
What is the length of the program?
Exactly 20 days.
We start on, I believe it's Thursday, June, Thursday, June 4th, Thursday, June 4th through Wednesday, July 1st.
I know that over the past several years, we've cut summer school down to the bare minimum just to help kids pass on to the next class or graduate. I'd really like to see us get back, once we get on our feet again, to have more enrichment type programs in the classroom.
How many kids attend?
Last year at the elementary level, we had 96 students attend. We have a targeted population for middle school of 260 students and for high school of 600 students.
I mean, six hundred.
Six hundred students. Six hundred, we can. We run, the summer school program, when we reduce the budget, we are using DESI's credit recovery model. So, the, for the core areas for classes that have been previously taken and failed, you can, we run a two-week session, so two weeks of two core areas and then two weeks for another core area. So, and then we have four classes of, that are part of the DESI credit recovery model. We offer Art Basics, the Adventum, our online learning program, ACT Prep, and a Health and a PE section, so one section of each that runs the entire four weeks.
And then at the elementary level, we have a 20-day program, same students. This year, we're going to have ELA mathematics, and we're adding science for the first time this year, and an art teacher who will work around a weekly science. They still owe the two new additions, the science and art.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll just comment on the secondary level, since that was my field. I like the idea of we assume that the students really have learned something, even if they haven't passed, instead of just assuming the kids know nothing. And so, the idea of building on what they already know in a short period of time makes it a much better situation, particularly for the students. Because we tell them at the beginning, "We know you've learned something, let's build on what you've already learned." And I think that's a real positive attitude change for kids instead of just assuming they know nothing.
Do you have, at the end, any sort of award, pump them up kind of thing?
We have weekly awards to pump them up because it's summer. And so, with summer, we need weekly incentives to motivate them to come and be engaged. And that was another reason why we included science and art content also, just to, my personal belief, you attach students to schools, and many times you can do that through the arts. That increases achievement. So, that was one of the reasons why we are moving towards art and science being a part of the summer school. We've had such success with Saturday Academy that we thought we'd try and replicate that at the summer school. So, the science coordinators have been working very hard to try and create different kits other than what we have for the Saturday STEM, because we're confident that next year our Saturday STEM will grow even larger because of the success we've had. So, we don't want to continue to give students the same content. We want to give them the same content that we do.
Well, and I encourage the board, I took a tour of the Saturday program after the three ladies presented, and it was really awesome. And I encourage all of yous to get out there sometime. And the middle school was also, I mean, it was just amazing to me, because I'm trying to think if I were there on Saturday, I'd be probably in a lot of trouble, you know what they were. That was amazing, it really was.
And they are very excited. I had parents say to me at our open house, "You know, this is tough because my son is engaged in basketball."
Right, that's not me.
But now that I've seen it, he will not miss the Mother Saturday. So, it is so wonderful.
Well, you know, building on what, I won't always speak for the board here, but building on what I experienced at Scholar Bowl with the kids, if you need some big bad board members there to kind of pat them on the back and smile and encourage them, just give us an email, okay?
Come tonight, I mean, Saturday, they're having, Mr. Van Ald is the Saturday leader, and he's having hot dogs and...
Oh, neat.
...chips on Saturday, so come and enjoy festivities on Saturday.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Hearing none, ayes have.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Mr. Forbes, Black History and Women's History presentation. This is for board information only.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board, and community members. It's interesting, when I'm looking through school reports from Black History Month and Women's History Month, over the years, there's been several themes that keep appearing nearly yearly in these themes. And that is, these two months are celebrated all over the district through a wide range of activities, including mini lessons, unit of instructions, readings, assemblies, and community outreach nights. But then, when you, then it looks like every year, there's a kind of an annual theme or themes that show up within those. And this year, three themes kind of showed up, and this appeared in several, in several schools. One of those, you've heard tonight repeatedly. One of those, the first is the 50th anniversary of March, the March to Selma. That was, I saw that several times throughout school reports, books read, lessons given. And of course, three Ferguson-Floreson School District students next week will participate in the walking classroom in Selma. There is only 150 students nationwide sponsored for this event. And each of our three high schools will be represented at Selma at this event. It's pretty neat. And those three students will also, before going to Selma, will spend a week at Washington, DC. And I talked to one of the students today about who they're going to meet. It's impressive. So, that's really kind of neat connection with the 50th anniversary of March to Selma. Another is career education themes. You've heard about some of those tonight. And then also a theme that is really interesting, it's kind of really nice, is this idea of STEM subjects being interrelated with history and writing and all these other things. So, the integration of learning, I have seen this year, those themes. You can see some of these on the Ferguson-Floreson School District Twitter feed, some of the events are mentioned there, there's videos there. And I'm hesitant to mention schools. Each year, I try to mention different schools and event. NORC had video announcements, and tomorrow night, they will have an event called Request of Pleasure, which is a community outreach. And students have been working since November on this presentation. Berkeley Middle School had guest speakers representing a variety of career fields. Don't let Dr. Hazel fool you, besides, there's a lot, there's a lot more than science that goes on at Halls Ferry. Fifth grade, fifth grade had Living Black History Museum. And Dr. Washington stole my thunder from VOTE because she mentioned about the Science Center initiative. But for fourth grade there, the fourth graders, kind of a unit of study, they read this book called Through My Eyes by Ruby, it's autobiography of Ruby Bridges, and they saw a movie about Mrs. Bridges. And then they wrote an essay about what, to finish their unit of study. And so, I'll conclude with, since the true past has much to teach us today and shape our lives for the future, I want to thank the board for emphasizing the study of Black History and Women's History. Because by doing so, Ferguson-Floreson School District students and staff can learn to be more well-rounded, just, and active citizens at the local, national, and global levels. Questions or comments?
I'd just like to say, again, everyone, and it's, you can be glad it doesn't happen, don't see the 17 pages of the reports that he's condensing for us. I mean, there's a tremendous amount of things going on in every building in the district. And Mark has just highlighted some of the big ones, but there's a lot of stuff going on, and it's very, very impressive.
We, there's over 100 items mentioned, and I only mentioned four of the 100, but schools. I limited it to five just because I know the board report's already large to try to limit it, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Career and Technical Education Report.
Agent Tool, board, we're going to just fire it up. I'm Jay Volich, I'm the current Technical Education Coordinator for the School District. Four years ago, we got involved with a movement called Pathways to Prosperity. Oh.
I've been doing the A+ or...
Oh, I'm sorry. Problem was?
Career and Tech.
Yeah. That's the next one. There you go. Okay. So, about four years ago, we got involved with the current technical education, Pathways to Prosperity. We have seven programs that are certified by DESI to be the current technical education certified vocational programs. At the middle school, we have three programs. Computer Literacy is not offered at Berkeley Middle due to a staffing issue. These are our grants that we work from. This year, our Carl Perkins Grant is $20,112. And from Renovate High School's grant that works with our Advanced Manufacturing Program, we're going to break them about $15,500. This Pathways to Prosperity report, I've talked to about it in previous years, these things, these bullet points they're talking about are not new education, but it's the first time they've been combined in all things. This report is 37 pages long, it's broken down into thirds, the first third talked about the difference between education and business, and second, third talked about the increases in technology over the years. And the third part was an action plan of what needs to happen. The thing that's new is they're talking about an infrastructure. This last, with local, regional, intermediary organizations provide the infrastructure. Okay, what that is, is somebody that's lining up education and business so we have a place to go have, like Boeing, opening up their doors to those girls. to go have, like Boeing, opening up their doors to those girls from McLaurin, and Monsanto opening up their doors. But we don't have time traditionally, because everybody's doing more with less, to go find these places. So Education Plus has stepped up and created this website. So any educator that wants a guest speaker to come in from XYZ company and talk about tool and die, you can go there, register, put your need out there, and the companies, once we get it populated, will hopefully respond, okay? We're going to go to the Northwest Chamber of Commerce in July and present this information with Education Plus. Okay, non-traditional partnership, this is not us asking for money, this is us for asking for your time and your, and your location. In the past, people have been hesitant due to insurance reasons, but some of those, they're starting to make some exceptions for these, okay? What I got out of the report is it endorses two-year degrees, now this is Harvard endorsing a two-year degree, endorses current technical education, endorses certificates, and talks about experiential learning, job sharing, internship apprenticeships. And we're already doing the instructor-to-achterships here at Ferguson Florisant through STEM TQ and the innovative campuses. Now that's turned into DESI Pathways for Teachers. This is one program that we've created, this took us two years to get going, and we're going to have our first kid graduate, one of the young men was one of the wrestlers that was here tonight, I was hoping he'd stick around. But it's going to have 11 hours of credit at community college, dual credit, technical credit, that'll go towards a computer and grade of manufacturing degree, and he's going to be tested over eight national certifications. I don't think they're going to get all eight. I mean, we haven't really spent enough time in the welding booth to get, so it's something we're going to have to look at at the end of the first cohort to run through. These are the community colleges and the local carpenters joint apprenticeship program that we have partnered with, and if they stay in line, they can turn that into an online technology management from CMO. Okay? So the summer, I have to come to speak at the administrators' giveaway. So I came with an action plan, I thought I need to have an action plan. So for elementary, we need to introduce, I wish the elementary teachers sucked around all of them, so we need to introduce the elementary teachers that there's more options out there than a four-year degree. Because I know when I say this, everybody, when I go give these presentations, everybody in the room has a four-year degree and probably a master's degree, and probably working on something else, okay? But there's people out there, whether the two-years associates or specialized training with a lot of certifications, that are making some pretty good money, okay?
You're right.
And we need to push an A-plus program. So I take schools to North County Tech, okay? Why North County Tech? We have seven programs, they've got 29. It's on half-days, on half-days, all of our teachers are doing, at the high school level, are doing something, so they go in and see an empty classroom. Well, here at North County Tech, an hour and a half, they can walk around and see 29 different occupations going on, okay? They always like the fire truck. So, so far, we've had Halls Ferry, Holman, and Wedgewood. Now, at the beginning of the year, we always start with more, but something comes up, hey, we got a, you know, we got math test coming up, or we had to, so we have to reschedule and reschedule. I think we're going to maybe reschedule one more elementary for the end of this next month. At the middle school, guest speakers and career awareness are the main focus, okay? So Verizon Wireless came on during E-week and spoke to students at Ferguson Middle. Tommy Ringo, a professional musician, somebody I met through the Chamber of Commerce, came and spoke to some kids at Ferguson Middle. We had a career fair at Berkeley Middle, and we were scheduled to take some girls down to Slough from across Keys, but on a Saturday, but weather, through a wrench in that. So I don't have any pictures of that, I'm sorry, I was double booked that day. So we also want to get to work out about what people in the trades are making, and then I also started introducing Merrick Data to folks, Missouri Economic Research Information Center. These are hard to see, so I made copies of this, the state and the, and the local, and the column on the left, this column right here, those are top jobs. Three of those jobs require a four-year degree, the rest of them are two-year degrees, associates or apprenticeships. So as for the region, if you just Google Merrick, you can come up with all that data. At the high school, I'm not going to read all those to you, because I've got pictures, but as you see, we're addressing everything along the way, and if you go down to the bottom four bullets, if we're going to stay, our kids are going to stay competitive, we need to address those four areas. And in the past, we had enhancement grant money, that's matching grant funding money. We had, what, $800,000 a couple of years ago? This year, we don't have any. Next year, we don't have any. Because it's matching money. That's a fact. I'll leave it at that. All right. So we are, through PD funds, we are adding, start working on technical writing. Okay, so Cash, Mr. Cash was talking about the IED kids. That program right there is what that young man was working with, we're teaching in the middle school, it's running that machine, that, that's a water jet cutter. That's about $120,000 for each one of those. There's, they had about six in there. We take the teachers, there's our group, we had a couple Pattonville people in there, but we had, take these teachers, this is Component Bar, and then this was Icon Mechanical, and they, Icon Mechanical moves gas and liquid for hospitals and stuff, okay? So you went to all these sites, and then you pick the one you like. I went to Icon Mechanical, and they said, okay, well, we're getting the car, we're going to go over to Wash U, and we're going to pour some, they're pouring concrete down the sixth floor. And they were showing us how the circle right there is that thing embedded in the concrete, and they, that's a transit, that's a telethon transit, that's on top of that building, and they're shooting it 800 yards away, it's X, Y, Z axis, and a lot of math. I could talk for a long time about it, but I'm getting done. Anyway. Actually, they go visit for a day, then they go, for a week, we had them writing lessons on this. And so the people went to Amherst, were running statistics using Excel spreadsheets. So the English teachers were writing communications, because soft skills is huge, huge. So, and the counselor was writing about recruiting into the trades. So this year, we're looking, last year was manufacturing, this year we're looking at biological engineering. So we've already taken a group to the Bridge Park Biomedical Research Development Group, which is owned by the Danforth Center, and we've taken a group to Monsanto, we took a group to Express Scripts, but they said we couldn't take any pictures in there, they're going to put us in a small room for an extended period of time, so. That's what they said. So we've also, on our PD days, we also go to training centers, we go to the carpenters' union, we've been to sheet metal workers, we also, we had Civil Design, it's a civil engineering design company, they've come in and spoke at two of the high schools, they were supposed to be at McLaur, but due to the flooding down in Kentucky, they were all out of town on that day, so we had to reschedule. They have offices in four states, so. We've also had junior achievement, job sharing experiences with the kids, this is the kids from South, they were at the Brentwood AT&amp;T store, and it's a day-long job sharing with the, their vice president, Wireless was there that day. So the last thing I want to speak about is, we have a training center in the middle of our district to train people for jobs, and hardly anybody knows about this. Does everybody know where the old Circuit City building was? Is? Okay. Those are the jobs that they're training people in that are free. People have to be 18, clean, and pass the work keys at dams, and you can go in and train The trades are really worried about people aging out and retiring. They're looking, everybody I'm hearing is saying 50% in the next five years. So if you know anybody, if you, here's our goals for the next year, same as they were last year, we're just going to kind of keep, keep going in the right direction. If anybody has any questions about any of that, there's my contact information, my office is over at MSB. Give me a call.
I move we approve the report.
Second, this is for board action. Thank you. Motion made by Ms. Hogsett, second by Mr. Ebert, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Here are none, ayes have it. Thank you, Jay. All right, A-plus Schools Report.
I am. All right, A-plus Schools, this will be short, I promise. So, A-plus Schools Program, who knows what, does everybody here know what's an A-plus Schools Program? Who doesn't know? Who does know, let's raise our hands. Who does know? I see a couple hands are up, all right. A-plus School Program is a scholarship program, started back in the 90s, there's requirements for it. Okay, I'm not going to read those off to you, but you basically have to come school a day to be a good student, get a 2.5, and then for 48 months, after you graduate, you can receive free tuition to any community college in the state of Missouri, to any of those 14 places. Okay? Now, you can receive some money from four-year schools, it's not, it's not all the tuition, they'll take a little bit of money off, but this is a great way to get started. Other states have copied this, there's a Tennessee promise, and now the president has also talked about, I haven't seen the details on this, and he didn't mention Missouri, but we're, for a national election this year, so. Anyway, the reason that this is so important, this is where I went to college. And this last week, I called some of my college buddies, and I was asking them, what, what was the tuition, because I look, I don't have any of my statements. It was $25 or $26 a credit hour. That's 10 times higher than it is this year, okay? Now, minimum wage is only doubled. But if you do the math, I think if you work three part-time jobs, you're still going to be in debt. And that's how much, right there. I'm going to slide some other show, but that's okay. They don't have graduate class of 14 yet, but that's the average. And that's CNN money, that's not my opinion. So this is huge, we need to push, every freshman needs to sign up for this, in my opinion. So on the 2014 items, we don't have any changes in the partnership plan, and I always like to show the participation rates, much higher than they used to be, much higher. And you can call it that economy, you can call it PR, whatever. Here's our ongoing report data. We can prove in some places, so. Any questions?
I move we accept the report.
Motion made by Ms. Hogsett, second by Mr. Schrader. Discussion?
I like your tuition thing there. I remember, my freshman year, I won a scholarship to that very college. Full tuition for a whole year, $180.
Only buy your credit hour.
Any other discussion? Here are none, all in favor of the A-plus Schools Report, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Here are none, ayes have it. Thank you, Jay. Item 20, Student Code of Conduct, this will be the first reading.
Good evening, Board, and good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just like to share just a little bit of information, the Student Expectation Committee met in the month of January and completed their annual revisment of the Student Code of Conduct. I'm very happy to say it was a very robust conversation during that month, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. I probably want to thank board members who participated, as well as teachers, administrators, parents, community members, it was just a wonderful group to work with, and I truly enjoyed the experience. There were some minor changes of grammar and language, but there were a couple of changes to note, and I would just like to mention those real quickly here. The first change, or I guess major change, was added language from House Bill 1303 to the Student Code of Conduct. And it basically states that students may wear clothing, accessories, and jewelry that display religious messages or symbols in the same manner, and to the same extent that other types of clothing, accessories, and jewelry that display messages or symbols are permitted. So this really talks about tolerance, and we are a nation of tolerance, so we, I was very glad and happy to see this type of language added to the Student Code of Conduct. The second notable change was high school students' age change from 17 to 16 years of age in regards to academic administrative placement. This is big, because several years back, we changed, we went from 16 to 17, and that was really the recommendation of many different programs, just because students were not, they changed the dropout rate, the age, it was mandatory that students had to stay in school until age 17. So we kind of changed with that, with that law. However, as educators, we realized very quickly that, you know, 17 was much too late for academic change of placement. When students are in difficulty academically, you know, you need to make a move sooner rather than later. So we, we believe, as well as many parents and students, that, you know, 16 is really the right age to start moving them along, so if they can't successfully complete their education in a traditional setting, that we can do something for them in an alternative setting. So that was the reason for that change, and I think it's, it's the right move in the right direction. The other notable change was, a new section was added to reference Board Policy 2055. This talks about student speakers. As a district, we've always encouraged our students to be leaders and to speak up. However, we do realize it is important to have guidance and directions when, when they are students, when they are being student speakers. So we wanted to add some language to the Student Code of Conduct, to just give them some guidance and language when being student speakers. And the last notable change was a change, and this is real funny to me, a change in language for elementary students on cell phone policy. I remember when cell phones came in at the high school, I, I was one of the big proponents that said, oh my God, the school's going to fall apart. Didn't happen. Then, several years after that, middle schools wanted the change for cell phones, and I said, oh my God, the school's going to fall apart. Didn't happen. So now we're at a point where elementary students and schools are asking that the language be changed, and right now, it states that students are not allowed to use cell phones or electronic devices during the school day, this is for elementary level. The language before stated students are not allowed to possess cell phones or electronic devices during the school day. And I, and I would like to mention, after a lot of debate, a lot of surveys, a lot of talking with educators at the elementary level, parents, and just a lot of constituents, you know, we wanted to have something in our policy that would not be in conflict with what's really happening at the elementary level, elementary students have cell phones in their possession, and we wanted to just have our language reflect that. So those are the language changes that we are recommending.
This is for board information only, do we have any questions that you'd like to ask, Gary?
The only comment, Gary, from serving under committee years ago is, "It still doesn't look like one eight and a half by 11 page."
You're absolutely right, sir.
It'll be longer than that.
It is growing, unfortunately, the other way.
There we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Mr. Miller, going to talk technology, the all-important firewall.
Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to thank Ms. Burrow, I mean, she really can make a person feel like Superman. My first item is firewall. The district seeks to improve network services by purchasing a replacement firewall. Worldwide technology is the suggested vendor, and the board has received a copy of the bids. The cost, the hardware cost is $12,318.08. Annual maintenance would be $7,392. The hardware would come out of our bond or capital, and the maintenance would come out of the general fund, so we are seeking Board of Education approval for worldwide technology to provide a firewall for five-year cost of $49,278.08.
I move we accept the technology services firewall.
Sorry.
Motion made by Ms. Hogsett, second by Mr. Ebert, discussion. Here are none, all in favor of approval for the new firewall, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Here are none, ayes have it.
So my second item is the security device. The district seeks to improve network services by purchasing a security device. Soft Choice is the suggested vendor, the board has received a copy of the bids. Hardware cost would be $20,308.74. Annual maintenance would be $6,874.45. Hardware again would be bond or capital, maintenance would be from the general fund. So we are seeking Board of Education approval for Soft Choice to provide a network security device for an estimated five-year cost of $54,681.
I move we accept the bid from Soft Choice for the technology services security device.
Second.
Schrader.
Motion made by Ms. Hogsett, second by Mr. Ebert, any discussion on the security device? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Here are none, ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Permanent easement Metropolitan Sewer District request, Dr. Jaddali. Oh, Mr. Oden. Being board members.
We had a request from MSD for a permanent easement and a temporary construction easement at McClure High School to replace a deteriorating sanitary sewer line. They'd also like to move the sewer line, it currently runs behind our chiller area. And because of being able to get to that for future issues and repairs, they want to realign that as they replace it. Both of these are at advantage to the district, that we will have a new sewer line, sanitary sewer line, and as well be relocated for easier access in the future, and not be in any way in blocking our chillers or having to remove fencing or concrete. The actual temporary is 216 feet by 40 feet area. Including that is the permanent, which is 169 by 10 for future repairs. MSD said they would like to do this during the summer of 2015, and they will work around our summer school schedule, will take approximately three to four weeks. They'll have to remove asphalt in two parking areas and the adjacent driveway, allow some curving and grass area. All areas will be returned to original or better condition, which includes cleaning, repairing, replacing asphalt, curving, re-striping, seed and straw. And any damage to the district will be repaired or replaced in as condition or better. After negotiating with MSD, they've agreed to compensate the district $2,500 for the permanent easement. And due to the condition of the sanitary line and the location, we recommend that the board approve the temporary and permanent easement at McClure High School.
I move we approve the permanent easement for Metropolitan Sewer.
Second.
Motion to be made by Ms. Hogseth, second by Mr. Brown, any discussion? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Here are none, ayes have it. Teacher contracts? All right, teacher contracts.
Yes, sir. This evening, we brought forward a list of contracts requesting from Board of Education that these teachers be renewed for the next school year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and approved by Mr. Schrader, second by Mrs. Hogseth, discussion. Here are none, all in favor of approving the current teacher contracts presented by administration, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Here are none, ayes have it.
Mr. President, I would like to please, I have agenda item number twenty-five. I would like to make a motion to postpone until the April eighth meeting of the regular board.
Second.
Motion to be made by Ms. Hogseth to postpone discussion of item, budget item, or agenda item twenty-five until the April eighth meeting, second by Mr. Ebert. We need a roll call on this one.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Ms. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Secretary, what's up? Ms. Hogseth?
Aye.
And Mr. Chubert?
Aye. Thank you. And look, don't go too far, it looks like you're back up for the instructional technology specialist position.
So I'm assisting with document evidence, this impacts our department. So the district is seeking to improve instructional technology resources by adding an instructional technology specialist position that would specialize in secondary education. This position would coincide with the elimination of a technology specialist position through attrition. So we're seeking Board of Education approval for that staffing move.
I move we approve the instructional technology specialist position.
Second.
Motion to be made by Ms. Hogseth, second by Mr. Ebert, for the instructional technology specialist position, discussion.
Just for information, this is for secondary, do we have anything for elementary or middle, or how does that work?
We do, so we added a position, Abby Irwin occupies that right now as an instructional technology specialist. So she has elementary certification. So we have had great success with her presence in the district in that capacity. And hence, the decision or the request to bring forward the second person who would have that secondary certification to work in conjunction with her.
And this is basically a replacement, since we're losing position through attrition?
That's correct.
This should not have, it should be a...
It's relatively budget neutral.
A wash, as far as the budget goes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Here are none, all in favor of the instructional technology specialist position, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Here are none, ayes have it.
Mr. President, I move we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Schrader? Brown? Aye. Schrader?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.